Good evening and welcome to the October 29th, 2024 business meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you. So is there any public comment on any of the agenda items? Seeing none, the Treasury report for June, July, and August 2024 are available in the business office. We're going to begin with the consent agenda. Item number one, Sam?
Yes. Resolve to approve the consent agenda, items two through six, as presented to the board at this meeting.
Questions or comments?
The consent agenda includes CSE, CPSC placements, additional hours for various staff members, approval of an overnight tournament trip for the cheerleaders in February 2025, a change in the November Board of Ed meeting date from Thursday, November 14th, to Tuesday, November 12th, to allow for the superintendent of the board to attend a regional meeting, and approval of a contract with Kids Educational Services for a classified student.
And just to note to that, the overnight trip request is not paid with any taxpayer funds.
It's all fundraisers.
It's all fundraisers.
Right.
And Sasha, I jumped in front of you, so you were right to do that. Just so you know, okay. Questions, let's see. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? The resolution passes. So now we'll begin with our presentations for tonight, and the first one will be the Facilities Capital Project update.
Good evening, everyone. This will be quick, because they cut in front of the students. I promised it would be under 10 minutes. So I'm joined here this evening with our colleagues from KG, KP, KPMG, I guess I'm doing it all the same, it's been a long day, KGND, along with our Facilities Director, Dave Spittle. So in the past, we spoke about the work of the Facilities Planning Committee, and now we've reached a point where the project is going to be recommended to the Board of Education. So we switched it from the committee to what the project overview is going to be. This slide captures a majority of the work that is expected to happen. I know it's a little hard to see, but this is really our one-page poster that'll be going out to, out into the community, that really encapsulates everything that we expect to accomplish in the project. So while we've talked about many of these things, I just want to take a quick opportunity to summarize them, and then I'll show you some of the renderings, maybe some new ones you haven't seen. And our plan is for the next board meeting is to ask the board to pass a resolution to allow us to move forward, set the dates for the referendum, and everything else that goes included. So as we spoke about, we're looking to renovate the elementary school library for our student learning commons to make it a more modern space. That's the picture located on the top left there, as well as a playground being installed. This playground is specific to primary-age students, students aged K through 2, as well as meeting the needs of some of our special education students. So while the picture on the upper right is not the exact playground we've committed to, it's an example of something that we think we would consider. So that's just, it's actually a local playground in the area that we want to try to mimic some of those same things. And the big piece at the elementary school is installation of the geothermal wells. So currently about 33% of that building is run off geothermal. Our plan is to transition the entirety of the building over to heating and cooling with the geothermal wells, very similar to what we have here at the middle school, high school campus, and that would eliminate our dependence on heating oil. The last piece of the elementary school is the renovation of the nurses' suite, so that's sort of the drawing there in the middle. And what this will do is create a larger space, a more defined space for our nursing suite, introduce more fresh air, isolation space, storage, and some of the things that they have been looking for. For nobody, for anybody who has not been in there recently, the beds are the same beds that were in there when I was in school. The wall has been wallpapered and painted 27 times, and we start pulling it back to layers, and it's a space that's desperately in need of a facelift, and that's what we hope to accomplish. At the middle school, much of our work is exterior, focusing on the parking lots. So for anyone who's been to the high school, and they see the sidewalks, the grass, the trees, the lights, none of that exists once you cross over into the middle school. And we think that we could create a much safer welcoming space, as well as one that's more fitting for the flow of traffic that we need on campus. So our plan is to mirror the traffic flow in front of the high school through the middle school, mirror some of the lighting and the sidewalks to create a safe pedestrian passways, as well as lighting for anyone in the parking lot there. And that drawing is represented on the bottom right. At the, we're also looking to do some instructional spaces at the middle school, although a majority of this work will likely be done with district funds, looking to really revamp the hall room upstairs, making that small group instruction space and offices, which would free up instructional spaces on the outside of the building. And we've also earmarked money for performing arts center upgrades. Specifically, we're looking at lighting and controls.
Good.
At the high school, most of the work focuses again in the parking lot, replacement of the retaining wall that we know is failing, ripping up the old pavement and putting down new pavement and improved drainage. We're also looking to improve accessibility, the courtyard, which was redesigned several years ago, is not necessarily conducive for students with disabilities or other students who have mobility concerns, and so we're looking to replace the p-stone that's there with pavers to make it accessible to all students. We're also looking to install a solar panel on the wellness center to generate electricity, and looking to replace the flat roofs above the instructional wings. For, a few years ago, we replaced the curved roofs, which were deemed to be the most pressing issue, but now it's come time to replace those flat roofs, which are approaching 25 years of useful life. And the last piece, the last picture there in the middle on the right, is something that we've added. We've heard several times in the high school regarding concerns for, or needs for, a dance studio for IB dance class. We haven't been able to identify a space up until now, so now our plan is to, figures, the way this day is going? If we lose power, I'm out of here. So the, we're looking to renovate our current weight room and turn our weight room into a weight room slash dance studio. So that rendering there in the middle represents what our new modern weight room would look like, along with a dedicated space for both floor exercise, as well as our dance students being able to use it. So I know we spoke, I just want to leave this in here for anyone who looks. On several occasions, we spoke about the makeup of the District Facilities Planning Committee, how it was created, some of the committee work that was done, and the committee members, so this is really just there for reference. We spoke about the parking lot and the retaining walls, pictures that represent the damage to those. There's sort of a zoomed-in picture of what the new campus will look like once complete, new paving, sidewalks, additional parking in some locations, and better traffic flow. We spoke about the turf, track, and fencing. Now, this work will begin this summer. This is not money that we're looking to borrow. We'll use district funds to complete this work, but I did want to provide an update. This is one of the renderings that we're considering, or one of the rendering of a design that we're considering, which is really a blue track with gray transition zones. We've also looked at the possibility of having an all-blue track, and you'll notice the green, extra-green behind the valley. That's currently a track surface, and we're exploring the possibility to turn that into turf service. And really, it's a huge space. It looks small in the picture, but if you walk out there, that's a huge space, and it could almost be a secondary practice space for us to utilize. So we're going to, at least right now, we're in the exploration phase to determine whether or not that's feasible within our budget. We spoke about the geothermal and the boilers. The three main things here is our high school boiler is nearing end of life, and we have replacement costs upwards of $1 million. Geothermal will eliminate our dependence on oil for heating, as well as we hope to get money back from the Inflation Reduction Act. And obviously, we would love to be a green school. We recently applied to be a green ribbon school, so we hope to achieve that as well. Nursing suite and library, we spoke a little bit about that. Here's some more of the renderings, what we anticipate those spaces looking like. So this is library from four different angles. Nurses' suite that we saw earlier, and that's the rendering of what, now we've already made some changes to this space, but this is sort of our first conceptual drawings as to what we hope the new nurses' office will look like. Some additional work we spoke about, flat roofs at the high school, drainage work, weight room, dance studio, our elementary school playground. So here's a zoomed-in view of something similar to what we hope to install behind the elementary school. And then there's another picture of that weight room dance studio, with the bar in front of the mirrors, the hardwood floor for tap, as without infringing on the equipment that's necessary, both cardio and weightlifting equipment that's in that space. Some of the finances, we estimate the project costing approximately $14 million. Of that $14 million, the current projection is to get $9.2 million back in state aid. That's just off that base number, 66.3% is our current building aid number. And our plan is to use approximately $2.5 million of our capital reserves, so that's money we've put away over the last several years for projects just like this. And our non-negotiable remains that there will be a 0% increase to taxpayers. I spoke a little bit earlier about how the project will be broken up into two phases. Phase one begins in May of this year. Turf, track, and fencing, supported with district funds, no vote is necessary, no impact on taxpayers, it's money that the district already has. Phase two is the larger piece of the work. We anticipate a vote in the winter of '25, a bid awarding in the winter of '26, and for the work to begin the summer of '26, spanning two summers, both the summer of '26 and the summer of '27, before reaching our completion date. And a quick reminder as to why now, the district benefits from having a stable debt service, so as we have debt retiring, we're looking to replace it with this debt. It allows us to maintain our buildings without having fluctuations in expenses, or without having to deal with maintenance costs that build over time. Our, this is aligned with what's on our long-range facilities plan. It helps control escalation of utility costs, so as the price of oil continues to fluctuate, always going up, that our dependence on that will be eliminated. New York State Building Aid, why I said before, 66, that $9.2 million we will currently get back from the state, that's something that's up every year during the budget process, and it's always a point of contention, and something that could very easily go away in the future. So we want to make sure that we're getting our project in while we're getting 66% of that money back. Again, that's our current number, it'll change. Construction costs and cost of materials only continue to rise, the longer we wait, the more expensive these things get. Again, it's tax-neutral, we'll be replacing existing debt without costing the taxpayers any additional money, and by maintaining our tax, our debt service, it allows us to maintain a stable tax levy. So we're not forced to seek a supermajority just to simply maintain our buildings and provide instruction to our services, to our students. And that's my quick run-through. So any questions for myself, or KGND, or Dave?
If you could just reinforce again the fact that there is no impact on the taxpayers because an existing debt that we're paying is just going to continue at the same level when we do this project. If you could just elaborate on that, so that the public understands.
Right, so 2027, we have debt from previous projects that are falling off. Our plan, it's the same thing we did last time we had a project, our plan is to replace that debt with new debt. So while there's no savings going back to the community, there's no additional costs going back to the community. What we hear time and time again, it's districts that have this deferred maintenance, you keep pushing it off, pushing it off, pushing it off, and then all of a sudden, you need a $100 million bond. You can't issue a bond of that size, certainly not in a district our size, without significantly increasing taxes. So our goal remains to reinvest that when the opportunity presents itself, so our buildings stay well-maintained, and we don't run into sort of that financial cliff situation where we're asking taxpayers to pass a bond that's going to increase their taxes 5%, 6%, 7%, like whatever it could be. So the model's worked in the past, it's financially sound, it's something that we continue to look out, like, so we knew in our 2018 project, when that was voted on, that '27 was the next opportunity we had. So this work started a couple of years ago, still with an eye on 2027, when we know it can be done without increasing taxes.
And again, this is just maintenance and repair. We're not building another building or anything like that. It is fixing what has, over 25 years, started to, you know, like our homes, you need a new roof, you need new parking lot, whatever.
Right. It's, unlike our last project, it's very infrastructure-driven. Geothermal, roofing, parking lots, retaining walls, paving, yes, there's a few instructional spaces, library, nurses' office. We want to make sure that we're touching, there's something for athletics in the weight room, there's something for the cultural arts in the performing arts center upgrades. We want to make sure that we're touching all of our constituent groups, but the vast majority of this is really in infrastructure work. Yes?
I know you were asking Yorktown. You had spoken to them about the solar and the risk that it was having on the water and the thing. I know you touched on it a while ago, but just a reminder, as I don't really remember what came up with that.
So Dave and I toured the site with the Yorktown engineer and one of someone else from his department. They pointed out all of the mitigation factors they've put in since the last time it's flooded onto our campus. You can't make this up, but I don't think it's really rained since then. I think that when it flooded our campus was legitimately the last time we had substantial rain. So while I remain somewhat pessimistic that it's going to work the way they plan, they did point out all of the different measures they put in place to try to prevent that from happening in the future. So we're unfortunately in sort of a wait-and-see phase. Until we get four inches of rain over two hours, we're not really going to know how well all those things work.
Exactly.
If it is determined by you or whomever that the mitigating circumstances have failed, will you seek additional monetary gains from Yorktown to help with this infrastructure project?
Yeah, I mean, if that happens, it would really be a determination made by the Board of Education, because it would likely be in the form of litigation. So it would, we would get advice from our attorneys, but it would likely be a decision whether or not we want to sue to ensure that the district property is not being impacted by what's happening next door. We've exhausted all sort of political hand-reaching olive branch-type proposals. As you could see out there now, as atrocious as it looks, the solar panels are going up, like the frames are there, so it's not like they're changing their plan now.
No.
So it's sort of a wait-and-see with it ever rains again, and then we'll see how well their mitigation strategies have worked.
Thank you.
Crystal, do you have any questions for us?
Good.
Any questions for Walter, he came here.
Well, these projects look super promising, and one of the things that I love is that this work is not only being focused on what we have to do to ensure that our buildings are safe and running well, and also conserving energy in the future, but that we're also really putting our resources behind the instruction of our students, right? We are married to the IB program, you know, we have these IB classes, but those types of classes in the particular areas where we offer them require resources for our students to really get that hands-on learning. Without a dance studio, we can't do that, right? I also very much appreciate the thoughtfulness that has gone into making sure that every building gets a little something. We know the middle school got a lot of updates in the last project, and so, you know, this is more focused on high school and elementary, as it should be right now, but it's really nice to see that our kids are going to play in a beautiful playground. It's really nice to see that our weight room for our athletes is going to be top class, that our dancers now have a space to practice in, that our kids will be safe on that field, right? And I think that's really important. Not only will they be safe, but they'll be playing on a beautiful space, that we are already looking at, to be able to see how we can reutilize the space to fit more team practices on it, right? We also know that that track is, you know, something that the community uses, and so we're also able to provide that for the community. And so I think that all of these projects coming together with a zero increase in taxes to taxpayers is absolutely incredible. And I know that the planning work for this began well over a year ago, and that there were quite a few people on that team. I wanted to join, unfortunately I wasn't able to, but there were over 20 people when we started this particular project to just get input from the community. So those people who came out to have their voices heard about what they felt the district needed to do in this project, thank you for your time, because it was the voices of everyone that really came up with these ideas. And those who really stuck through that process for over a year now, who have met consistently every few months to kind of really figure out what would be in the best interest of our community and our students, thank you. I know that this was very thoughtfully done, and I'm excited to see the future of Putnam Valley with these projects coming through.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. And in addition to that, I also want to say, sitting in the meetings, I want to thank the Facility Committee for, because the ideas that they provided, they provided a lot of these ideas going into the projects, prioritizing the projects, as well as all the deep discussions that they had. And thank you for, our architects for being there to always answer the questions that they have and listen to our community. Along with that, I'm very happy to see the accessible space for special needs children. Love that idea. And question, oh, a couple of questions. 66.3% building aid, is that locked in, or is that changing every year?
Changes every year. You can see even here, I have to update this slide, because last time we did it, it was 67%. So it fluctuated, the last project in 2018, I think we were 63%. So it fluctuates within that 60 range for us. Obviously, needier districts get more, more affluent districts get less, but I can't speak for sure what that will be, but we're pretty consistent in the same range. And we use a financial planner who projects out all of these things, and it's always sort of the most conservative approach. One of the questions we get, and I've been working on updating our FAQ document, is unlike, you hear about public works projects, right, they, this was going to cost $20 billion, and it cost $200 billion by the time they were done, right? That kind of stuff happens all the time. That's not a possibility for schools, right?
Right.
If it's a $20 million project, we could spend $20 million. If it's $20 million and $10, you have to cut $10 out, right? It's, that's how it works. There is no cost overruns. So through the work of our architects, through the work of the construction manager, through the work of our financial advisor, everybody's looking at those numbers from every angle regarding what are possible escalation costs in materials, what's possible escalation cost in construction, what's possible interest rates or tariffs we dealt with for the wellness center. So all of those things are considered when we come up with this number that we believe, that we know can stay tax-neutral.
Thank you. We, we know we can communicate to our school district. How are we communicating to the Putnam Valley community?
Yeah, we make ourselves available to any organization that would welcome us in. I know we've done the fire department in the past, we've done the senior center many years ago. We're willing to do the roadshow. We have a community forum that's planned for December 12th right now, so that's a month after the board. We hope the board will accept the resolution to move forward the project. That'll give opportunity for us to get out our FAQ document, we have a Five Fast Facts document, we're going to look to produce a video similar to what we did last time. We want to get this information out in as many different mediums as possible, to as many different people as possible, to ensure that every voter has the information they need to make an informed decision come January 28th, '25, which is our current projected vote date.
And speaking of vote date, my last question, or comment, we know there's been comments from a couple of people, the Facilities Committee, why are we not putting this to vote in May? And I know the answer, but I want you to say the answer again.
Sure. You want to talk a little bit about that? The timeline, or why it is? So essentially, Walt has more detail as to what each of those phases are, but we have to vote in the winter in order to meet a summer of '26 start date. When you look at the design timeline, the state approval timeline, all the bid timeline, all of those things, we work backwards from our start date and determine when we need to vote. And that's ultimately what makes that decision.
Yep.
That's it? I'm good? You can just stand next to me.
It's good.
I like you, I like your barber.
Anything we forgot to ask? For the architect, anything you want to?
Oh, anything you forgot to ask? I want to hear you, Walt, get in there.
I think Jeremy did such a great job presenting, he did such a great job presenting. I'm going to take him with me now for the rest of the week. So, yeah, the schedule's a little tricky, right? School construction's difficult, because we really only have eight weeks to do most of the work in a good summer. And getting the project designed and through SED takes a little bit of time, and we really want to be prepared to hit summer of '26 running, so that we can get this work done on time. And it's critically important to finish on time so that you can borrow and backfill your debt at the appropriate year, that's 2027, right? So that's when we need to finalize borrowing and wrap the project up. So to start it on time, we need to look at January.
Thank you. Did you have another question?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions about this?
We're good, I think we're good, thank you.
All right.
Very good.
So I'll drive from here. So our next presentation this evening is our opening of schools report from our high school, so I would like to invite up Matt Mello and Dr. Latice Chapin.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's definitely been an adventurous day, and, you know, our thoughts, our prayers go out to several of the families that are out there that were affected by events today. All right, I want to draw your attention to a painting that was commissioned by River DeMarco. Every year, we have an Aspire Art Contest. She is such a talented artist that our art teachers actually commissioned her to create something for our school this year, and you can see that painting there, and it will be up and around. It probably takes, I don't know, like five or six hours to look at it, to really understand what it is all about, but truly amazing artist. I mean, you can see her work on display, you will, and we'll have a nice little ceremony to celebrate her work and, you know, keep promoting our ASPIRE acronym in our school. The other thing I want to point to you too is define your why. And this is one of the things that we talked to our staff about at the beginning of the year. Really understand why we do what we do, and then understand why we did what we did. And I think it's really important that everything that we do, we, you know, we ask ourselves why. Everything we're planning to do, we ask ourselves why, in order to best meet the needs of our students. And then on the other side of this, we want our students to embrace that concept of defining their why as well. So I think it's really important, you know, for us to understand what we do, and more importantly, why we do it, and keep that in our minds as we frame everything we do for our students in this district. Our board, you know, we always have like a theme, a goal, and last year, we developed our core values in Putnam Valley. Dr. Luft, you know, led this initiative, and last year, we focused on community, this year, we're focusing on opportunity. A couple of the questions that kind of jumped out to Dr. Pain and myself, how do we continue to offer more personalized education programs that meet the needs of all students? I think we're doing an incredible job at the high school of creating almost like a menu of classes that like are going to find an interest in some students that can take advantage of that, and I think that's really important. But we want to make sure that we can continue to offer that programming for our students so they have the opportunities that they want and need moving forward. And then how do we intrinsically motivate students to take advantage of the wealth of opportunities? I know Dr. Pain and myself, we read a book this summer called Drive. Dan Pink is the author, but, you know, really, like, you talk about what motivates students, and this came out of our Vision Quest meetings last year, teachers, staff getting together to really talk about, you know, that there might be this lack of motivation, and how does that work? And, you know, we can get up, we can make this incredible halftime speech to get them all fired up to go, and maybe that works well in the short term, but how do we develop that motivation within them to want to be successful in whatever they're challenged with? And so I think that's one of the things that we want to focus on this year, you know, intrinsically motivating students, that drive coming from within, not from outside. So a couple of our focuses this year. A couple staff changes, really minor kind of staff changes this year. We have Karen Cruzy returning again as a leave replacement. I can't thank her enough for doing that, so special education leave replacement. And right now, if you can see in the background, our own Gina Frye is out on maternity leave, and we were fortunate enough, and I can't thank Dr. Doherty enough, for being a part of helping us find Karen Profita to be the replacement in the student support suite. And she has brought a wealth of experience, knowledge, you know... And she has brought a wealth of experience, knowledge, you know, to us, you know, has been very vocal stepping right in to help us with all kinds of student needs issues at this time. Our really, like our new staff member, we found a physics teacher, everyone, and it's Ashley Graham. When, when we hired her, her last name was Amos Seeger. She's now Ashley Graham. Thank you, Ashley. That's a much easier last name to say. But we're real happy to have her here. If you get a chance to meet her. She is all sorts of enthusiasm, excitement, and love, passion for physics. So we're really excited about Ashley coming on board. And we just got a brand new school, our student resource, school resource officer, and that's Matt Monroe. We've been working with him for about a week. We want to thank both Chris Goodman, Deputy Goodman, you know, who was with us last year. And we want to thank Mike Savistano, Deputy Savistano, who took over in the interim until Matt Monroe, Deputy Monroe was available for us. I got to say that everybody that we've worked with in the Sheriff's Department has been excellent. I can't say enough about any one of those individuals and how well that they support our school, make us a safer place. And they're such great, great like liaisons with the students. They're, they have like incredible conversations. They reach out to the students and make those kind of connections that we want our law enforcement to make with our students. So they're a great resource for them as well. All right, at this time, we are going to invite up a couple of our students to talk a little bit about our big buddy program. Today we have Miriam Ortega Alvarez and Jack Gilhuli. So they're going to come on up and speak a little bit about our big buddies program.
Hi, everyone. I'm Miriam.
And I'm Jack.
So we're here to talk about big buddies. We're obviously the big buddies, we're the seniors. So every year a senior gets appointed to two, three maybe little buddies. So they're the incoming freshmen. And we kind of help them get accustomed to what it's like to be a high schooler because it's a big change coming from the middle school to the high school. So we start actually with training our junior year. So we have an interest meeting we have to sign up for. And we complete a survey which asks us like our interests and like what, what we do as hobbies so that they can pair us up with a little buddy that we have a lot more in common with. And then over summer, we come in and we talk about what the school year is going to look like, how, how we're going to help them. And we decorate their lockers, which is super sweet. It feels very welcoming when they come in.
And when we get to the start of the year, we pretty much just check in on them. Well, they have their freshman day, which we have to go to for half the day. And we show them around the school where their classes are, to meet their teachers for the first time so they can get like accustomed to who they're going to be with for the rest of the year. And then maybe two weeks into school, we check in on them in their free period to see how it's going. And if they have any like questions so far throughout the beginning of the year and how we can answer them. And we usually, every big buddy tries to check in with their little buddies at least once a week to see if they have any new questions or problems that have like appeared that they need help with. And, yeah, we, us big buddies, we try and keep in touch with them as much as we can just to make sure they have the best freshman year that they could have.
Yeah, and I think it's actually great to have this system set up because it can be really scary not knowing like how you're supposed to act or what you're supposed to expect once walking into a place. So I think that just having someone who's already been through that is just great. Like they can give you all the knowledge, they can help you like know what clubs like might interest you or like just little details that they've learned throughout their journey.
Got a quick question for both of you. You both had big buddies when you were freshmen?
We did.
How was that experience for you?
It made the transition a lot less scary. You know, you had them checking up on you. And then also like the, there were some like arranged, not like, like arranged meetings sort of set up. Like there was one time we had like pizza with them. So we had like talk, time to talk, like not just about school, but like just bond with them, feel like we're not alone.
Yeah, pretty much the same thing. So we have someone that has been through the whole experience that we could look up to and if we needed help, we'd go up to them. So that's how we felt. And then now we're bringing that to our little buddies this year. And if you weren't, if you weren't able to see your little buddies, you could also email them just to make sure if you're not able to see them in school. So you give them all the help they need.
I think that's so cool that you pay it forward. You know, you, you had big buddies and now you're returning that favor to the incoming freshmen. I love this program and you're two good representatives of it. I applaud you, really.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
When we, when, for the IB CAS presentations, we hear a lot about the big buddy program. And it's love it. It's like I'd love to have the kids are so involved, the students are so involved. And I got kids more, you are to us. But thank you for all you do and thank you for coming here tonight to speak to us.
Of course. There are so many of you that have volunteered to do this. And as the mom of a freshman this year, I sincerely appreciate it because I think I had a little bit more anxiety about high school than she did. But she had this layer of support from all of you. And my question to you is like what motivates so many seniors to want to be a part of this? Because obviously it's super popular and people look like they really want to do it and they're excited about it. What do you think about the program motivates you guys as seniors to want to do that for freshmen?
I think it's mostly about how we just feel empathetic, like we just know how, like we've been there and we were like, I, I know like we're the ones that had been there the longest time before since, like compared to like sophomores, like we've been there longer. So it's like we can do something with the information that we've learned. It's not just like knowing it and then, you know, just using it for your own benefit. Like I feel like it's just truly just wanting to help out, feel, help out others feel more comfortable and safe in our environment that we have grown to love ourselves too.
That's awesome. Thank you.
What does your shirt say?
Big Buddy.
It says Big Buddy.
Oh, buddy. Great job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it, it really is amazing to think that we have so many seniors every year that really want to be a major part of influencing the next generation of Putnam Valley High School students. And I, I want to make sure that we, you know, mention that, you know, Lisa Penta and Carrie DeCiana are the advisors for the big buddies. And they go above and beyond, you know, what you would expect somebody to do to make sure that they're setting up students to be matched up with the right little buddy and, you know, making a really positive experience. Not just during the first couple of days of school, but throughout the entire school year. You know, they push into the academic study classes. We have a fifteen minute academic class before lunch for ninth graders. And so they push into those classes as well to do some, you know, kind of like, you know, learning, right? About school and, and opportunities and, and all that. So we're really excited about it. Can't say enough about everything that they do.
I just want to point out, the success of this program is directly related to the number of students who participate as seniors. If we had ten volunteers that were each assigned twelve little buddies, it would be a much different, much less effective program than if you have eighty seniors take on a hundred freshmen. And I think that's again, a huge testament to our seniors and their willingness to give back to a program which they benefited from. Because without that student participation, the program would not have the same impact it does.
Absolutely. And if you see that top middle picture, that's all the big buddies, kind of like crammed in, you know, to get a picture of them. But, you know, we need a bigger hallway. So maybe that, that building's project, just a bigger hallway so we can get a bigger picture. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Payne.
That's the majority of the senior class, right?
So, as Mr. Mello shared earlier today, we're continuing to utilize, create opportunities for our staff and our students. And in order to do that, you can't do that without the voices of including all, right? And so over our tenure, almost, of, of being together in the building, we've created three groups that we can work with, three of our constituents within the, within our building. One that we do every Monday, we have one time on, on a Monday schedule, eight of our staff members. This can be from our office staff, our custodians, our faculty. They, we come together and we focus on a topic that will help us to continue to strengthen the foundation that we have within our building. As well as look at our focus for this school year is to talk about how do we intrinsically motivate, you know, ourselves and our students, mostly our students throughout the school year. Each morning when we come in to have these conversations, we are collecting all this information. At the end of our first semester of looking at it, we try to see how, what do we, what do we see? What are we, what patterns, what trends are we seeing? And then how can we use this information to better support our staff and students within our building? The second group that we have, we're going to invite up two students to kind of share on that in just a moment. But before we do that, building out of the student group, we created our, our parent leadership group. This year we had our first parent leadership group last week. And we invited in a group of parents to come in and talk about the challenges that they feel that students are facing and how we as a school building can help and support. We're hoping to do this at least four, four times throughout the school year moving forward and just continue to have parents come in and share their perspective as they see it in their homes. We definitely have our building steering committee where we do have parents on that committee. And we're asking our parents to come in for an, an evening or maybe, you know, an afternoon, you know, when they can come in and share some perspective of what they see on their side of things so that we make sure we're including their voice in everything that we do. So without further ado, because I, I just love our students in our Tiger Streak this year. Last year we had about twenty students. This year we have thirty-five students. This particular group is selected by staff members, recommended by staff members as they see them as leaders within our school. So it's not your students that would typically volunteer, but we wanted to get a wide array of students from ninth through twelfth grade to come in. So I'm just going to invite up Peyton Faraguzzi and Nolan Lee, who are two of our Tiger Streak.
Hi, my name is Nolan Lee.
I'm Peyton Faraguzzi and we are the junior president advisors of Tiger Streak.
So a Tiger Streak, the reason we're called Tiger Streaks is because a group of tigers is called a streak and we're Putnam Valley High School's student-led advisory group.
So Tiger Streak is consisted of handpicked student advisors from grades ninth to twelfth. And we also have help from our staff members, like administration and school psychologists.
During our monthly meetings, we discuss things that could affect both individuals and the school as a whole.
In our time in Tiger Streak, we've been able to make changes schoolwide with communication. School rules we had either enforced or wanted taken away and we were able to fix challenges.
We are also able to openly discuss problems and challenges we see and face in our school community and share perspectives and ideas throughout grade levels as well as suggesting fine solutions. I know this year, we recently talked about fixing the water filters in the water dispensers because they were all glowing red and it's not really motivating for students to refill water bottles if they see like a giant red light saying it's not safe. So we, through our, through our student and staff communication, we were able to get that done.
And the ones without red lights have a little sticker covering the lights so no one knows what it says.
Yep, but we got it covered, so.
The reason we're laughing is Steve Spittle's sitting here, like hearing this.
Sorry.
We're excited in the future to work with the staff and student body and fix any problems we have in the future. Thank you.
How many individuals, students make up the Tiger Streak?
So this year, I know last year we had around twenty students and this year, as Dr. Payne said, we have around thirty-five.
Wow.
I know last year there were only a few kids in each grade and this year, so we were in it last year. So we were amongst the first to be in a part of Tiger Streaks. And this year there's a few new upcoming juniors and a few upcoming seniors. So out of the junior and senior grade, we both, we added students and then as well as the upcoming freshmen and sophomores.
That's outstanding. Good, good.
There's a lot of freshmen. It's good to see there's some involved.
I have a question. I know that you guys are nominated by teachers. Are, is it a voluntary opportunity or?
Yeah, we weren't forced into it. They didn't shove us into the room.
I was just curious. So everybody's really motivated to help.
Yeah, so like last year we all got like emails saying we were nominated. And I personally, I would say that the, the teacher nominations were well picked because it, you know, it seems like most of us want to be a part of this and we want to help the school community. I know last year we also went to a technology seminar to discuss the issue of cell phones and devices in school. You know, school rules regarding, you know, social media, digital safety and stuff like that. As like the whole Tiger Streaks, us as a group, we went, it was also like an open invitation. So you could have also gone on the trip as well if you weren't a part of Tiger Streaks. But I think that goes to show how like, I feel like as a group, we're able to get a lot of stuff done and it's, it's good education.
And the staff, the staff picking it really helps as well because it's such a, it's not just the people who want to be really involved and want to do everything. It's really just a wide range of all different types of students to get as many perspectives as possible.
Yeah, like the, the nominations in terms of like how many students, like thirty-five of, over all four grades. It's definitely good because you get people from all different things. So I'm on the track team, but we also have students from like football teams. We have kids from jazz band. We have kids that are in like the school drama and the school musical. So we get kids that sort of are in all the different aspects of, you know, the Putnam Valley community and what our school has to offer. So because of that, we get a wide range of opinions and new ideas.
Cool.
Thank you both for coming out tonight.
Thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
Great job.
Like I said, I'm very, 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 very proud of all of the students that are a part of Tiger Streaks. As much as I'm proud of all of our students at the school. I mean, not only do they bring awareness to what's happening within, within the building, I think that they do bring about great ideas. One of our seniors who graduated last year helped to create our student remind, just making sure that all students were informed. These, that these are ideas that came and were birthed out of our students so that we can create opportunities for students. Our first meeting, we, we also create community within there. They created a handshake, which they still have to teach Mr. Mello for our next one. So we'll see if he's able to do that. But in that, like they said, they brought up different situations and then we'll share them out with our staff so that if there's anything that we need to change or support them within the, the building, we will. If you'll see under there, like we, this year we have student advisors nominated by grade level. So there's at least two students, they nominated themselves. You know, they, they volunteer. Nothing is forced on the students. They, they pretty much are a true voice with, within the room. And then we also created a lunch ambassador because we work with our, our director of food services. And she shared she wanted to hear the perspective of students. So we're going to create opportunities for them to meet and they'd be able to share, you know, what the students might be interested in eating, how they might want to fix the lunch lines. You know, I think we put numbers last year or something like that so that they make sure everybody got their paninis that were nice and hot. So, I mean, it, it, the, the things that can be brought up are very varied, you know? And we're looking forward to have their parents come in to also lend their voice as well to support what we do at the high school.
I love that, that photo of the kitten.
It's in my office.
With the tiger reflection. That really is cool. Yep. Says a lot.
So I'd like to invite up Mrs. Judalisa Canceliato. Did I say it right?
Okay, so good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to join you tonight. I'm excited to share a bit about two ongoing activities and events that take place at Putnam Valley High School, the Connections Club. place at Putnam Valley High School, the Connections Club, and some, some concepts that we brought together for our back-to-school night. Both of these activities play a huge role in the support we offer our students and their families, and creating a welcoming environment for all. I'll start off with sharing a bit about the Connections Club. This club is specifically designed to support students who are newly arrived to the school district. These students come from a variety of different locations. Some come from neighboring public school districts, private schools, other states, and even other countries. And the key focus of this group is building connections, hence the name of the club, as we understand that at a high school level, moving into a new school district can be very challenging and daunting and difficult. We held our annual newcomers breakfast on September 27th, and on this day, we were able to bring all of our new students together to share a bit about their experiences before coming to PBHS. I think that this is an important component that they said was very valuable to them, because, again, they're new to the district, and we don't really know them. And so, what opportunities are we creating to make sure that we're hearing about their experiences before they even joined us? They were able to open up about some of the fears related to this transition, and speak about some of their hopes, as they continue their journey as new students in the district. This breakfast also included student club reps that were able to share about their clubs and activities that they're a part of, and offer some words of advice to our newer students. And interestingly enough, which was not planned, a lot of the student reps that joined us that day were students that were at some point newcomers to the district. That's why, this just happened by chance. And so, that was kind of like a neat connection for students to be able to make while we met that day. As we move forward, we will continue to support our newcomer students through the school year with monthly check-ins, and this means large group check-ins, small groups, and one-on-one, making sure that we're meeting their specific needs. And we'll also gather feedback through surveys to learn about their experience, and to inform ourselves on ways that we can improve their transit, help to improve their experience in the transition to a new school district. I'm proud to share that our newcomer students are already reporting positive experiences, and in their short time here, many have been able to connect with different sports and clubs and activities, and are receiving support in navigating school platforms, as simple as platforms for grading system, academic work platforms, receiving guidance on what adults they should be connecting with for a variety of needs, that could be academic planning, school food services, technology, and social emotional support. And we continue to look forward to build on this program throughout the remainder of the school year. And now, I will share a bit about our back-to-school night. Our focus has been to ensure that we're meeting the diverse needs of our community. And in order to accomplish this, we've implemented a few different strategies. First off, we started off last school year with updating the home language preferences on our, our power school systems, and this was really an effort to make sure that the systems that we have really reflect the, the language preferences of our families at home, and that they are utilized for effective communication. So, one of the things that, is that we want all of our staff to be able to see what those language preferences, preferences are, so that, that when they're communicating with our families, we are communicating with them in languages that are their preferred languages. This not only encompasses our A&amp;L students and their families, but we also have many other students who come from families whose home languages are languages other than English. One of the things we did was we had a presentation that was parallel to Mr. Mello's presentation in the pack, and this was a good opportunity for, for parents to be able to see the presentation in their native language. Many parents shared that they were happy to see that we were providing the option and creating that space to have access, to ask questions, and learn more about the community in their native language. In addition to the Spanish presentation, we also provided iPads that parents were able to utilize, if they wanted to, of course, were able to utilize as they went through each classroom, and these iPads had live translations as they were, were moving along. But lastly, I have to share that one of my favorite things that I saw that night was how many bilingual student volunteers stepped up to really support our families in visiting classrooms and seeing the community. They were really eager to jump in, and that's, for me, that was the highlight of the night. They were really happy to support with this work, and it truly embodied what a welcoming community looks like. Overall, we want to continue to foster a sense of belonging for our families, and we are proud of the work that we are doing. With that being said, I would like to thank the Putnam Valley community for your support as we continue to strengthen these initiatives. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I have to say, Judy has done an incredible job of, you know, bringing in or making access to parents more available to everything that we do in the school, and it's, it's really just, it's, it's, it's about opportunities, right? That's what we're talking about, right, this year? It's about opportunities. And, and she's a catalyst to providing more and more opportunities for plenty of other people. All right, on to the really exciting stuff. Five-year enrollment numbers, everyone. They're out. Here they are up on the board. You can see that, you know, we are rising up in our enrollment numbers, and I'll talk a little bit about one of the reasons why, which happens to be our, our garrison neighbors that are now coming here that we welcome into the school district. You can see that we had a, we had a nice little decline going on there in enrollment, and we're starting to bounce back a bit. We're hoping that that continues to happen. But, you know, it, it will, it will really take off when all of our families that had children go through the district, and they enjoyed it, and now they're still living here in Putnam Valley, and they could sell their house and move out, so a younger family can move in with students to repopulate our schools. We would love that. Not that we don't love you and everything that you've done for our district, but you've supported us for a long time. Now, support us by selling your house.
No one can say that the way you can. I just want that to be put out there. You say it so beautifully. Thank you.
I'm, I'm one of them.
No, I wasn't going to say that, but.
Matt, can I talk to you real quick about enrollment numbers? We hear chatter about a lot of students leaving for other schools, or for homeschooling, et cetera. Can you speak how that doesn't show up here?
Yeah, I don't think, like, that's not, that's not the case. It's not, you know, the numbers of students that opt to go, you know, private school, you know, has not increased, like, the statistics have not increased at all over the course of time. Homeschool, homeschool is, like, again, it's very, very steady as far as homeschool goes. There was a spike in homeschool, obviously because of the pandemic, but that has gone down, you know, in the last two years.
Thank you.
You're welcome. BOSI's, I, I know, like, Mr. Oliverio loves this part. He's an incredible advocate for all of our BOSI CTE students. And, you know, the one thing that I want to point out is that 77 students are now going to BOSI's, where you could see last year, it was 67. So, it's increased by 10. We have a lot more students taking advantage of all the programs offered at BOSI's. And here's kind of a breakdown of everything that they are enrolled in at Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's. I'm not going to read all those off to everybody, but if you want to take a quick picture, go ahead.
Matt, last year, you had a, a young lady come before us to talk about her BOSI's program, but also the academics that she was taking at Putnam Valley. Could you arrange that again sometime later in the year?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I think what kind of gets lost is that, you know, these students go to, go to, to, you know, Tech Center for all these different specialized, and again, we want to provide that specialized opportunity for every student, right? We don't have a culinary course. I don't know, I'll look into IB and see if they have one. But we don't, you know, so be able to provide that opportunity for a student, that that's their passion, I think is really incredible. But it doesn't mean that they don't excel in the classroom as well. A lot of those students that are taking BOSI's classes are also taking IB courses as well here at the high school. So, you know, I, I know we have talked about a student last year in IB music, who, you know, a BOSI's tech student, and was taking IB music, and Mr. Odell was, you know, he was like one of the most passionate IB students that he has ever had. I mean, it was really, like, refreshing to see, you know, that student find a course, a challenging course at Putnam Valley, in an area, a field that he was really into, music, really good guitarist, and it really just, it enabled him to grow in so many different ways, but he also took advantage of that opportunity.
Of the Tech Center as well. Yeah, if you could bring another representative in, that would be just awesome. Because it really, that, that word going out there, that you can go to Tech Center, get a specified skill, but also be great in your academics, people need to hear that, because the Tech Center over the years, you know, it's been tarnished somewhat, and, and I love that we're rebuilding it here within the district, because it's so important for those kids who have, you know, different skills. They want to work with their hands, or, or acting, or culinary, on and on. So, that would be awesome.
Yeah, we talk about intrinsic motivation, right? I mean, if there's something that a student is passionate about, why are we not trying to find those opportunities for that student, right? You know, you know, maybe they're like me, and they're not really, you know, strong chemistry students, you know, and, and, you know, okay, so they're not going to be strong in that chemistry class, but it doesn't mean that they don't have talents and, and expertise in other areas, and, you know, that need to be fostered more and more. And so, I, I really do like what we're doing as far as providing those opportunities for the students.
Just a plug to Jackie and to you, that we like field trips, so we'd always like to go to BOSI's and see the stuff, so.
All right, there usually is one, right? There's usually one every year, right? They do.
Yes, they do offer an open house, but we can also arrange a separate tour if that is to the port side.
I would, in addition to the courses that our students are enrolled in, I would love to see the other courses that perhaps are not being, you know, tapped by students, so that we can kind of share with the community, like, the other opportunities that might be available to their students, you know. And, and to Sam's point, I'm sure that our guidance counselors are talking to kids about all of these opportunities that they have at their fingertips to go and take one particular course, right, and, and then to come back home to Putnam Valley to, you know, take the rest of their courses. But to be able to kind of get that field experience that a high school, you know, might not be able to offer, because it's, you know, a regular high school, is invaluable to our kids, right? And so, just knowing that there are other things out there, aside from the courses that kids are currently enrolled in right now, might really spark some interest for some of our community members. So, just a thought.
No, excellent. I got to say that, you know, one of the other things that we noticed, talking to the guidance counselors last spring, the enrollment numbers in, in Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's skyrocketed, your number of requests. And so, you know, they had to turn students away from programs that they wanted to go into. And I think that, that's something that we have to make sure that we are working with BOSI's to do, you know, whatever we can to make sure that our students can take advantage of the opportunities that they want to take advantage of. Sometimes they have to give, like, choice one, two, and three, and, you know, choice one fills up, you know, because, again, BOSI's has a limited capacity as well. But we, we need to see that, know that, understand it, so that we can advocate for our students to have the ability to, you know, take part in any of the opportunities that they want.
Good. Thank you.
All right, so, we just completed our five-year IB, that's International Baccalaureate Evaluation. This is for the diploma program, commonly referred to as the DP program. The one thing that I love about IB is they are well, they're like major advocates of the reflective process, and not just the reflective process for students in a classroom, the reflective process for the teacher, the reflective process for us as administrators, you know, in everything that we do IB. So, every five years, you go through a five-year, a pretty rigorous reflective process that's outlined pretty specifically by IB. I know Vinny Gregorio wanted to be here tonight, but he couldn't, and he really led the charge. I would say over the last year and a half, Vin was embedded in this process, and making sure that he was bringing together the groups that needed to be brought together, to do that reflective piece, to understand fully what we're doing, and how we can better support and utilize the IB program moving forward. So, I, like, just like anybody else, when I, when I looked at this process, you know, almost two years ago, and it was like, I got to write down, like, I, like, we do this. Why do I have to write this down? We do it, right? But the value in writing it down, the value in making yourself, like, kind of go through that, you start to think a little deeper about what you do and how you do it. And so, it was incredibly beneficial for us to get this idea of where we are as an IB world school, but as a school in general, as far as we're meeting the needs of so many different students academically and excelling. I'm not going to read all that, but key findings. And this was the, you know, the, the really important piece. We have a strong, strong IB program. We had two visitors. You can see that picture up there. There's two visitors in the middle. They're sent by IB to evaluate, you know, what we do and how we do IB, you know, here in Putnam Valley. And they were incredibly impressed with where we were in five years, you know, how we got where we are, and how the community has really bought into our IB education. You know, Vin, Vin actually asked them, they're like, well, you go to all these schools, you probably say this at every school, and they're like, no, we don't, you know. They're very open and honest. They were both from different parts of Canada. They came in here and spent two days with us. They met with board members, they met with teachers, they met with administrators, parents, all without us present. So, we're there, like, I hope this is going well. I hope they're saying the right things in there. But, you know, it wasn't even about the, we didn't coach anybody up. You know, the IB team came in to talk to them, interview them, and they were amazed with what we did. One of the things they talked a lot about was our inclusive and family culture, you know, how that is just like resonates throughout our school. They felt that everybody they talked to had that same sense of Putnam Valley is really a family community, and that means so much to all of us, because, you know, the best, you know, groups and teams I've been around have been ones where you have that sense of family. You can really accomplish a lot if everybody feels like they have a place that they belong. So, anyway, it went really well, the five-year evaluation. We're heading into our second five years, and, you know, we can't wait to see where we are. You know, we still feel like we're, we're, you know, maybe we're getting out of the toddler stage when it comes to IB, but, you know, we're, we're still growing as an IB school. Along those lines, I know some people have heard about the middle school is bringing in the middle years program, MYP. The high school is beginning that process as well. It's, you know, it's, it's not something you just do overnight. It is a process, because it's a program, and there's a lot of, like, work that has to go into this from administrators and staff to make sure that it is successful. And I think that that's something that's really important for everybody to understand. You know, this, you know, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work, you know, and I know I could sit here and complain about being an administrator and a lot of, I made the choice to do this, so I can't complain about it, right? But, you know, we have to understand that, that it is a lot of work for our staff. There's a lot of things that they have to go through in their reflective practice, in what they're doing, to enhance, you know, how we do what we do in the classroom, and why. Just a note at the bottom, 71% of our students, seniors, 71% of our seniors are enrolled in at least one IB class. That means that 71% of our students are going to be working till the end of May. So, senioritis is kind of a thing of the past for many of our students. And then, if you look, there's about, our seniors average about three IB courses. So, across the board, it's almost three IB courses that our, our seniors are taking, and we're really proud that they are challenging themselves with a rigorous course.
Just want to, go back real quick. I just want to quickly point out, first, this slide makes me look reflective. It makes me look reflective. No, this was actually a tremendous, I think, learning experience for us. The, the two visitors who had come in have a tremendous background in IB, and I know on several occasions, they were like, are you sure this is your five, your first five years? Like, it had been a process that we were through many times. But I also think it was a process that recognized the tremendous work that has gone into establishing a program, which is still considered new for us here in Putnam Valley, and the fact that these two individuals traveled the world doing these evaluations, and had such positive things to say about Putnam Valley, I think in many ways was justification for all of the work that went into it. So, I want to compliment all of our teachers for making this all possible. But I do want to especially recognize the efforts of, especially Vin, who I know did a lion's share of this work for the reevaluation, but also Matt and Letitia and the others that really participated. I had the opportunity to see much of this, of these artifacts on their way out, and it was volumes and volumes and volumes of paper and writing and reports and reflections and analysis. And it was a tremendous amount of work, so I did want to recognize the upfront work that went in prior to this visitation ever taking place. So, thank you all.
Yeah, we have a lot of, we have a lot of staff members that work really hard, you know, and they work really hard, because they're trying to create, you know, incredible opportunities for our students as they go through this, this district, and we're really proud of them.
Matt, I want to compliment also the IB presentation to the parents the, the other week. It, it was outstanding, and I loved that the students were there to explain their perspective on it, and the parents went around and were able to meet with those students. I, I, I thought that was just such a class act. And, and Mr. D. Gregorio, Vin, he is one hell of a salesperson on that IB, I got to tell you.
He really believes in it.
He does, he does.
He's an incredible asset in school, I think.
I think he's.
I never met him before. I thought he's incredible.
You were enamored, right?
I was absolutely enamored.
The first time also. He sold me. I, I, I'm wondering, you know, what's next for IB at Putnam Valley, right? This is the first five-year review. It went very, very well. How are we going to continue to innovate and kind of get deeper into IB? As you said, we're moving out of that toddler phase. What does that look like for Putnam Valley? What were some of the, like, growth points or goals that they, they kind of helped us to create?
Yeah, so, you know, here's one great thing about IB. Every one of their curricul-, every seven years, the curriculum is revamped. And so there's, you know, that's staggered. But, you know, so it's, there's nothing, there's nothing stagnant about IB. There's going to be curriculum and assessment changes every seven years, depending on what course it is. I think this year we have to send out like psychology, computer science, just extended essay, all these different group. They have to go out, you know, their seven years is up. So they've got to be, you know, learn about the new curriculum, understanding. So IB constantly looks at what they're doing and where education is going and makes changes. And then we have to do that as well. So that's happening. But I'll say this, if you look at the, on the bottom, the two arrows, the last two, you know, two things that they noticed about us, standardization of scoring. Last year, we started this work when we looked at the book, Grading for Equity. You know, so, you know, we have work to do with standardization of our scoring and grading, right? And, you know, and I think that's something that I know Jackie and I, you know, we've talked about that, you know, and the importance of that and that common language. And I think that's the help of MYP, starting in the middle school and moving up through the high school. Is, you know, that uniformity, you know, a student knows, you know, what, you know, Rubik's score, one to seven. They know what these things are and what they mean. And I think it's really important to keep reinforcing that. And then they also talked about horizontal teacher collaboration time, you know? You know, making sure that, you know, it's not just, I mean, IB, the diploma program, you know, that we have one teacher teaching psychology, one teacher teaching physics. So it's not like you have a whole group of teachers within a department teaching the same course. You really only have like one teacher teaching that course. So being able to look, you know, horizontally, you know, across that grade level, you know, year one, year twos, to understand what people are doing, that conversation is only going to make us better moving forward.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a comment. I have been enthralled with IB since the moment I heard about the complete shift in it. But I wrote down a couple of statistics that I learned from your thing that I thought I was just so impressed with. First off, only 938 of the approximately 24,000 public schools in the United States offer the diploma program. Putnam Valley is one of 938. It's less than one-fifth of the high schools offer this diploma program. And it's incredible that our little teeny district offers it. One of the other things that Vin said that I was just, again, enthralled with was that people are calling him from other countries and saying, hi, we're moving to the New York City area. We are looking at schools that offer IB and your name in Putnam Valley, little tiny Putnam Valley, came up and we want to come to your school. Can you get us in for, you know, a tour? And I think that's just amazing. I think I'm just so like impressed and proud of the work that you do and the school does.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. And, you know, one last thing I'll say about Vin, I think he exudes passion, right? You can tell that he is extremely passionate about what he does and he really believes it. You know, so I think that's, yeah, that's so important when you have a program as, you know, vast, intricate as the IB program can be and the amount of supports that students need in any different way. You know, and, and you, you need that person that's passionate. The students know that he's there and has their back and, you know, will support them however he can.
Oh, and one more thing. He's, sorry. He also, the offerings are so diverse. I think it's incredible. I don't, I never knew that all of these courses were offered in IB. I think if people are watching, this is also a valuable thing to know. Things like biology, chemistry, physics are offered in IB, but also things like dance, music, visual arts, film, sports, exercise and health, and computer science are offered. So there's really something, like we were talking about the Bosse's. There's also something to be said about what we bring to IB, that there really are so many offerings. And they can work hand in hand.
Yeah, and I'll throw business management in there again. We, we recognize that we had a lot of students going off to be business majors. And so, you know, Sean Gilroy brought in business management, which, you know, just, just another one, right? You know, to prepare those students heading off to, you know, college, give them that taste, that flavor of, you know, what business courses in college are going to be like. So it's great.
Yeah, totally.
Excellent.
So glad you spoke because I was like, we had a long conversation that night. So next, obviously, education has a lot of acronyms. And this is one of them. However, it packs a punch. This is MTSS, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. Systems is the key word in here, is that how do we build our systems to support students? Not just for remedial support, but also for enrichment. You know, I spend time talking with Vin, I spend time talking with all of our teachers to say, how can we support all our students in all that they do? Whether it's authentic science research, IB, Bosse's, what do we need to do as a school building to help and support them? So over the years, we've been building upon our MTSS programming and how we work it within the high school. When you think about MTSS, it was mostly researched back in the day, mostly for elementary schools, and then build on to secondary. But there's not so much research when it comes to like high schools and how do we best support high school students in the diverse opportunities that they have? And sometimes those classes are singletons, right? So how do we do that? I was happy when I came here that they had an achievement center already built into the system, you know? And what that, that program has done and is continuing to grow to do is to be able to support any and all students within the program, both academ-, well, not both, but academically, behaviorally, as well as social emotionally. I think when it, in its original inception, it was really supporting social emotionally. There were trips involved. One of our teachers, you know, takes kids, you know, to WCC and DCC too. And so they're able to talk about how you can look at your studies and then be able to see, where do you want to go beyond? Let's make a plan. Let's talk about your goals and objectives. So they have a point teacher that they can sit and they can have conversations with about what they are doing for the future. As well as students who might need some remediation within their subject areas and support in time management, the teachers can help to organize and structure them and create collaborations between the achievement center teacher and the actual classroom teachers that are teaching the content in there. So over the years, we've, we've built upon this by they, we now have a student support team, which is comprised of the administrators, our school nurse, our school social worker, our school counselors and our school psychologists, because we want to be able to manage, manage the overall health of the school. How well are we doing? So we make sure we have those critical conversations about any of the significant situations that are happening within our building. And then from that, we also have our student-facing team that actually works on building intervention. So if, whether it's a social emotional intervention and/or an academic intervention, we invite parents to problem solve with us to try to see how we can best support the student throughout the school year. One of the conversations I had with Vin when I first came here was when students were working on time management and we had a workshop, he and I are talking about like how we can build that even more. So it's, it's growing and like you see up there, it take, not that it takes a village, it takes a valley. So we try to incorporate everybody within our building to help and support our students. Me again. So, cell phone guidelines. So we all know that cell phones has been a topic of conversations throughout, you know, many school districts, state, you know? And we created guidelines last school year. And obviously, when we first started out, it was not well received by the students. You know, they're like, what do you mean? I can't turn on my phone. I can't talk wherever I want to. But we created opportunities for them. Yes, you have time to, you know, communicate with others outside of the classroom. But when we're doing instruction, let's turn out those phones off and let's focus. Let's talk with one another within the, the classroom setting. So we offered for them to turn off their, turn their phones on to airplane mode. Some teachers have offered cubby systems within the classroom where they can place their phones. And then obviously, teachers have that discretion of when and where they can use a phone for educational purposes because we do see the benefits in that manner. But we also see time and time again where it can be a mental health concern, where they're so focused on the, the cell phone and who's talking to who and, you know, what's going on over there, that they're very much distracted by what's happening. And sometimes it, it, it's to the point where then we need to have our student support, you know, involved in a, in a lot of the matters. So this year, we've included kind of like a three-step process to support the students. We have conferences directly with the students, conferences where that involve administration, conferences that involve the parents. And then if we need at time to reduce the amount of interaction with their phone, we have a place in, in our building where that phone can be housed so that they can then be less distracted throughout the building. But usually that doesn't happen till later on down the line, after we've had several conversations with them to try to build a plan around how are we going to, you know, operate within their classrooms. Questions?
You know, that cell phone problem may be alleviated because I know there is talk, and I had mentioned this at the Tiger Street meeting, Matt, that Governor Hochul and the legislature are moving to outlaw them completely in schools. So let's see where that goes. That may save the board and the administrators the headache of enacting our, our own type of, you know, no cellphone use.
Yeah. And we're also willing to have conversations. So what was built out of our, some of our building steering committee conversation is to hopefully have some form of a cell phone summit where we just have that conversations with families to just feel, figure out how do we responsibly use cell phones? Because people are going to use cell phones and how do we responsibly use them? You heard our students talk about our digital citizenship courses that they had so that they can make those, those decisions within their practice.
I know I've seen that photo before and I always thought we just picked on these two girls. I just finally took a closer look and realized every kid in the photo is on their cell phone in the entire room. Except for Vin, who's standing there just, I'm like, this photo was staged.
Yeah, I staged that. I went in there, I'm like, hey, everybody, you're on your phone. So it's how it goes. Yeah, I was actually just at a conference this weekend and, you know, one of the things they talked about was Governor Hochul. And somebody was saying, they think January 17th, there's going to be something passed saying no cell phones in school. I don't know. I think that goes into effect in September, you know, September 2025. But, you know, it, it's coming, you know, so. And I actually saw, there was a school district that has a complete cell phone, you know, no use of cell phones throughout the day. And they did a presentation and they said that, I mean, discipline went way down. Social emotional issues went way down. I mean, there's just so many things that were associated with it. They talk about FOMO, right? We're missing out is like the big thing with the cell phones. And everything that happens with the cell phones is kind of conditioned for you to grab it and look at it. So, you know, you know, we don't allow children to smoke in schools, right? Because it's detrimental to their health. And, you know, cell phones are detrimental to their health. We see it, we know it, we understand it. And so, you know, children need time to learn how to utilize. I'm sorry, I got a call. They need time, they need time to utilize, right, or learn how to utilize this, this great tool. Garrison, our Garrison students, I gotta say, we are so proud of this, so happy about it. You know, this year, of the 22 students that moved up from eighth grade last year, 13 of them are here at Putnam Valley. Last year, we had two ninth graders. Two more came over this year from other, other school districts. So we are really, really happy that Putnam Valley is so appealing to students from Garrison. And we want to make sure that we keep it that way. So we're trying to do more and more to build connections with the Garrison, you know, community so that, you know, it's, it's like, hey, you know, Putnam Valley is your community as well. We're blended. And that's really where we'd like to be. I know Dr. Luft has been in touch with Dr. Stoll, the superintendent over at Garrison. He was supposed to come in today to, to tour the building and meet, meet students. And I know Dr. Luft and I will be over in the Garrison District doing some presentations there as well. So we're really excited about this. And these students are awesome. You know, they're doing a great job here at Putnam Valley. Just, they, they just, they blend in and they become part of Putnam Valley. It's seamless and they're taking advantage of so many different opportunities that are out there. And so we're really happy. We have the eighth grade presentation for Garrison students on November 13th. They come over here, they get a sampling largely because they have to decide what high school they're going to go to in the beginning of December. So we need to give them a taste of Putnam Valley that up in November 13th. And then November 18th, we have the parent presentation. So the Garrison parent presentation happening then as well. Just a couple upcoming high school events. So IB Music and IB French are heading this Friday to the Tarrytown Music Hall for the Opera Carmen. You know, I think that's really cool opportunity for them to take advantage of. Our Fall Drama, Girls in the Boat will be not this weekend, the one after, November 8th through the 10th. I think it's Friday and Saturday at 7:00 and Sunday at 1:00. November 13th, November 18th, I talked about, November 19th, we have a Mu Alpha Theta induction ceremony, November 25th. That's what Dr. Payne talked about. Mrs. Scampoli will take a group of seniors over to WCC for an orientation trip. And also on November 25th at night, we have the Ninth Annual Gratitude Festival. If you have not gone to the, the gratitude festival, go to the gratitude festival. So many of our students just showcasing their talents musically in a variety of ways. It is a highly, highly entertaining evening. And, you know, you would just get to see students show off their talents. They work real hard outside of a classroom, you know, to perform music, you know, to gather, you know, solo. It's a really cool thing. Sometimes we have alumni that come in and perform as well. And then on November 26th, that's the day before our Thanksgiving break, we have our Fall Spotlight Award Ceremony. And that happens during lunch, our community lunch here at the high school. Reflections, questions? Reflections is IB. That's IB. It's IV.
You know my question. Community service. Can you speak about community service, how it's being reviewed, monitored? Who's in charge of it?
Yeah, so we've had a little bit of a shift and we brought back our Make a Difference Club this year. We have three advisors for the Make a Difference Club. And so, you know, they are kind of getting feedback from administration as far as like, you know, students that might need community service to be able to reach out to them. But largely, we wait until about January to kind of run some reports to see where students are with community service. And at that point, we can now look at, like, we start with our seniors, you know, to get an idea, all right, you know, who, who needs to get stuff? A lot of times, they, like, they forget to put their community service in. We're using Passport for Good again this year. We're hoping to move to something that we can use in-house in the future. So we've been working with Mike Lee and the tech department to develop our own kind of program for students to account for community service. One of the knocks on Passport for Good, P for G, is that it's, it's too cumbersome. There's too many things going on, too many bells and whistles. And it's not just like students just want to be able to go in there and enter. Teachers or advisors want to just be able to go there and approve instead of having to try and weave their way through all these other things that are, that are nice about Passport for Good, but just complicating what we need to do. So we're looking to move forward in the future, our own system that can be housed in Power School. And I'm anxiously waiting to see what Mike Lee drums up for us, but I'm sure it will be really good. So we, you know, really January is a time where we start to focus on community service hours and where people are. And basically, it starts with running a report on every grade and the hours that every student, every grade has. And then, you know, starting with seniors and backtracking from there to reach out to students. Like I said, we have the Make a Difference Club. And, you know, one of the things that they're focused on is creating volunteer opportunities for students to take part in.
So does the Make a Difference Club advisors monitor all students?
No, Dr. Payne and I monitor all students. So it falls, you know, under our.
They are more like the support to help them find community services and ensure that they are, you know, finding those opportunities and being able to be a part of those opportunities. And then we, we kind of track and monitor the, the contact hours.
And to confirm 40 hours?
40 hours. Yep. Everybody's got 40 hours now. So there's, there's no, you know, COVID, you know, you know, I guess, breaks for that.
That is a report also that we asked Dr. Luft for. I don't want to say frequently, like monthly, but we are also monitoring it from the board level, so.
He's aware because I have to ask him for it.
Exactly. And I gotta say, one of the things that's really fascinating about it is the amount of students that far exceed the, you know, amount of. is the amount of students that far exceed the amount of community hours.
Hundreds.
You know, there are definitely ones that it's a struggle with, and it might be a struggle with, you know, for several different reasons. You know, they might not have the support at home that they need, you know, for the community service, and, you know, that's where things like Make a Difference Club come in to help support them in that need, you know, for community service. I don't think it's because people don't wanna do it, I think it's really about making sure that you create the opportunities for them to do it.
Thank you both.
You're welcome.
I think the community service piece is a really good opportunity for kids to learn how to plan, right, 40 hours, how do I, you know, how do I figure that out on paper so that I can actually make it happen? It's a, you know, pretty big goal, and if those students wanna supersede that number, right, that's an even bigger goal, so being able to kind of plan a timeline, I think, is something that our kids really need to know how to do, so that when they get to college, they understand, like, I have these assignments due, and I have to be able to pace myself, and I think IB does a really great job of kind of preparing them for those pieces of college, that we're now seeing kids come back and talk about their stories, about how they were well ahead of their peers, just in how to do things like college, and whatever other opportunities they explore. To that end, I think that with the cellphone piece, I just wanna go back there for a second, it makes me a little nervous in all of education, that we're gonna just tell kids, you're not allowed to use your cellphone during the day, and that's how we're gonna keep you from using your cellphone. For me, it's more about teaching them the balance of life, right? They're gonna go home, and they're gonna use their cellphone. If they're binging on their cellphone, there is a possibility that things may get worse before they get better. So just in thinking about unintended consequences of this conversation, as we look at our students who are digital natives, right, we're digital immigrants, we weren't born with all of this around us, my five-year-old knew how to swipe at like six months old, and so, you know, it's a different generation, and we have to remember that. While there is so much research out there, or coming out now, about the effects of cellphone usage, when they are, their little brains are just not ready to receive it yet, or ready to handle that level of responsibility, I think we also have to partner with parents to be able to teach our students about balance. You know, just because you don't get to use it during the day, doesn't mean that you go home and use it for five hours, and when you're out of high school, it doesn't mean that you're also on it all the time, because you can be, or during the summer. You know, so I think the balance conversation is probably something that is also embedded in IB, and how to really, again, just balance your life, balance your time, balance, you know, all of the things that happen in life. But just to say that students are gonna be asked to turn off their cellphones, I don't think solves the issue. I think it solves like the Band-Aid of the issue for school right now, but we've, we've gotta work with home, because I do think that there's a significant home piece there as well, that shouldn't just fall on the school to teach a student, you know, about balance, but we have to really just keep that in mind. And then just the last piece that I wanted to ask is, not tonight, but if we could highlight some of the internship opportunities that might be available to students in our high school, that would be awesome. If there are not that many internship opportunities for students, maybe we can look at that, so that students can start to really go out into the field and dabble in what they think they wanna do for the rest of their lives, figure out if that's really what it is, and then be able to have a more solid footing when they go to college.
Yeah, I love that you brought that up, because I think that that's something that we need to create more opportunities for students to be involved in internships, especially like 11th, 12th grade. At this conference that I was at this weekend, you know, I listened to two people speaking about the college and career, or college and job fair that they put on at their high school, and it just seemed like, you know, like you get like a job fair, right, where, okay, you go around and you, you know, visit these, you know, or career fair where, you know, somebody's gonna talk to you about their career there, but they kind of blended the two of them together. It sounded really interesting, because they brought in local businesses that were actually, you know, looking to hire people, you know, not just sit there and present, but they're actually looking to hire people, you know, for their local business, whether it was like an internship-type thing, or it was actually to pay them. So I don't know if our students are exposed enough to opportunities that might be right out here in our community. I know Putnam Valley's pretty small, we don't have an IBM on hand, but, you know, there are other places, you know, within the area, I mean, this place was upstate New York, and it was near Great Adventure, up in Lake George, Glens Falls was a high school. So those students had all these other opportunities that were there for them with internships, but we're not that far from a lot of different areas that, you know, possibly could offer internships for our students, and I think that they'd like to do that, I think businesses like to do that, and provide students with those opportunities. So I agree, I think we need to look into that more and provide more opportunities for our students.
And part of our vision, because last year even brought up that opportunity, so I know that our staff would help to support us, looking into having those opportunities built into the high school.
Wonderful, thank you.
You know, the cellphone issue, I just wanna piggyback on what you said. The decision will not come from us or the administration, it will come from the state of New York. And we all know, at least I know, that the logic that rests in Albany is not the most acute or on the money.
That's because they don't have you up there.
You ain't kidding. Really, I'm serious about that, because they don't look at an area with enough extensive research and understanding, they don't.
And right now, the research is just coming out, because now we can research it, because cellphones have been around long enough, and unfortunately, when these mandates come out, I don't think the mandate is a bad thing at all, I think that we need to be cognizant of what unintended consequences of just shutting it down might be. Now, one thing that I will say is, thank you for being so transparent at back-to-school night about what the expectations were for cellphones. I appreciated that wholeheartedly, because it just allows school and home to be on the same page, so that, you know, our children are not trying to tell us one thing, and it's really something else. We want our kids to be focused during the school day, we want minimal distractions, but there's always this, when they walk out of the building, right, there's the home piece, and then there's the piece of them being independent, right? And so how do we make sure that they're well-equipped to be able to navigate life, when the people in their lives right now are no longer there helping them in the capacity that they are now, right?
No, I mean, I do like what we're doing, as far as saying, like, hey, you know, some of the onus is on you, right, to learn how to use this responsibly, and if you're not gonna be able to use it responsibly, now we're gonna have to look at taking it away. I don't know what New York State is gonna put out there, as far as like, you know, they don't wanna call it a cellphone ban, you know, they wanna call them like cellphone guidelines, like we did, right? We're not banning cellphones, but, you know, we're saying that, you know, school or the classroom is not the place for them, you know, largely is what they're talking about. So if you're very curious, I think we're gonna be doing a lot of work this summer in, you know, trying to understand and educate everybody based on what New York State comes out with, what next year will look like, but I agree with you, like, you know, there's gotta be an opportunity for students to demonstrate that they can be responsible with the cellphone, and if not, how do we educate them to do that? You know, and like I said, if we come up with a three-step process, hey, if this happens, this happens, we're communicating home, and I gotta say, the communications home have been really, really positive, and we're not getting, you know, kicked back from parents being like, how dare you take this, that's not happening, you know, they, you know, they're right on board with us, and I think that that's, that's really important, you know?
The conversations with the students as well has been positive too, and they understand that there is time and place too, because when you're in your classroom and you're engaged in your activities, obviously, you're gonna have that time to communicate, but you have time during lunch, you have time, other times throughout the school day to have those conversations, and so there's a balance of conversation that we do have with the students, prior to any kind of other situations happening with them.
Right, and I think that's really important, the way that you guys rolled this out this year, this is a topic of contention for some people, right? And I think that everybody's new to this, so we're all trying to figure it out, but the way that you rolled it out, in that students, just so that the public knows, students get to keep their cellphone while they're in class, they're on airplane mode, and in the interim of changing classes and at their lunch period, they're allowed to use their cellphone to do whatever they need to do, check their texts, you know, whatever they feel they need to do. So it's not the complete shut-off when students, some students, not all, have been completely engrossed in using that cellphone, it's like, you know, ripping it away from them without a little bit of a transition, you all didn't do it that way, and I think that that's really good, because it's teaching kids, you can still check in and not have to be on it all day, right? So again, just kudos to you with the process that you've implemented, because I do think that it's challenging at the high school level to do that, and you really have done a tremendous job, so thank you.
Thank you. The other side of this is being able to reach the parents, like you said, you know, so the students are here, we can talk to the students, nobody wants to be the bad guy, right? Parents don't wanna be the bad guy at home, so, and teachers, like, teachers don't, like, they're there to teach a class, you know, they didn't go to, I don't know if there's an education class that's, you know, taking cellphones away, there's no education class about that. You know, they wanna be there to educate the students and dive deeply into, you know, their subject matter, they don't wanna have to sit there and fight with students, and Dr. Payne and I have been like, we'll be the bad guys, right? So if there's, you know, like, have, start with a conversation with them, start with the call home, but like, when it comes to taking the cellphones away, we'll do, if it's gonna be a problem in class, we'll do it. Parents wanna be the bad guys, you know, teachers don't wanna be the bad, we'll be the bad guys, you know, somebody's gotta be that person.
Mr. Mello's fault.
I'm not always smiling.
I feel your pain.
But, yeah, yeah, so hopefully, hopefully we can reach the parents. You know, there was a parent that was like, you know, kicking themselves, because they can't help themselves from texting their child during the day, you know, like, oh, I checked Power School, and the grade went down, and I'm texting my child, I'm like, you know, you're just, like, you know, now that kid, you know, okay, had a bad grade in, you know, social studies, and now you just texted him to make him feel worse, and he's going to do his math class, he's not gonna be focused on math now, because he's all jammed up, and the parents, I just can't help myself, you know? So I think we all need saving, right? We gotta save ourselves from our helplessness.
On that note, I'd love to add that we have our Cellphone Summit internally for Putnam Valley families this Thursday. So we invite all families that are interested in learning more, we'll have Putnam County Mental Health Experts present, we'll have an administrator from Connecticut present on a panel to speak, and other panel members, so we welcome everyone, we'll also be featuring parent roundtables, so that parents can sit with other parents and hear what strategies they're using at home, and how they're managing cellphone use in the house, and what rules they have. So that is something that will be featured on Thursday night from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., next Thursday. Any other questions or comments?
No.
We're good? Thank you both, and thank you for everyone that presented with you, I appreciate it.
Outstanding job, thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to the second reading of policy number, series 9,000 Personnel. We initially reviewed this policy series during the October 17th meeting, and so just seeing if anyone had any comments or questions about this?
Nope. All good.
Again, thank you to Sam and Crystal, and whoever, all that were involved in reviewing the policy, we really appreciate your time and effort on that. So we will be voting on this policy series on the agenda for approval this evening.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So now onto our standing reports. We don't have any student representatives that were able to attend tonight, so we do have our superintendent for his report.
Good evening, everyone. For anyone who may not have noticed, it was an interesting day today. Without getting into all the details, I think we've communicated throughout the day regarding the incident that took place, and obviously, share our condolences to the families both in Putnam Valley and Solmers who were impacted, and I really wanna take this opportunity to thank and acknowledge both our district staff, beginning shortly after 4:30 this morning, they had gotten in contact actually with Natalie, because somehow I wasn't awake at 4:39 a.m., but Natalie was, so that's when it really started, and it's gone through about five minutes before I got here. I was still having phone conversations with troopers and community members and staff members, but there was a tremendous and immediate response from our clinicians, our administrators. I think Natalie held her first crisis team meeting at like 7:30 this morning, which is before any of those individuals' days would have even begun. So it was tremendous amount of work throughout the day, we had an administrative team meeting later in the afternoon to debrief, we have plans in place for each of the buildings in the morning, we have our crisis teams at each building ready to go, and talking points were shared with parents. So there was a tremendous amount of work that happened in a day where otherwise, there was no school. But I do wanna take a moment to also acknowledge the communication and collaboration that transpired with the police department, because I think as school districts, this is something we often live in fear of, right? What we don't know, we don't have the inside information, we're making decisions with half of the truth, and none of that was true in this occasion. Compliments to law enforcement across the board, but this particular incident was really supervised by the New York State Police. There was a captain who had made contact with Natalie and myself, I spoke with him several times throughout the day, he gave us timely, accurate information, he was decisive in telling us what he needed, he gave us the space and time to make the decisions we needed to make. He invited us into their command center, I spent a couple hours in the morning in the command center, surrounded by, like, at the table with the decision-makers, answering questions, providing guidance, and I found it extremely helpful to not be sort of sending a text and hoping I get a response, or making a phone call and hoping they call me back. But being in that space and that time, and them affording me the ability to do so, provided me with information I needed to make informed decisions regarding the school district, and actually provided me the opportunity to give them some suggestions regarding the impact on neighboring school districts, what this may look like later today, communications we've had with parents. So it was really a beneficial opportunity, I found, to do that, and I really wanted to compliment, the Sheriff's Department was involved as well, so many of them had reached out to us and asked any support that we needed, but it was really, for such a tragic event, and not that any of this takes away from the tragedy of it, but it was really, I thought, a good opportunity to see effective communication and collaboration between law enforcement and the school district, and I think we made the right, I know we made the right decision. Peace School Hollow Road, I had to get past three troopers with the permission of the captain just to get to our few staff members that were here at the high school, and that wouldn't have been possible if I did not establish sort of a personal relationship with them, but there was no way buses were getting around Putnam Valley, and nobody should have sent their kid to a bus stop with everything that was going on. So it was, it was as positive an outcome that could be possible, considering how horrific of an event it was, and I just wanna take the opportunity to acknowledge both our district staff and the New York State Police, as well as the Putnam County Sheriff's Department for their cooperation, collaboration, and communication today. It really made an impossible situation a little bit better to be able to do that. I don't know if there's any questions from the board about today, what transpired?
I don't have any questions, but as a parent of somebody in the district, I was really pleased with how the district handled it and the communication, and that you held the students, keeping in mind students going to the bus stop. I don't know that everybody always thinks of that, but it was nice to know that the school district did and made that call.
There was an email that went out this afternoon, Crisis Response Tips for Talking to Children After a Traumatic Event, and I think that's very important for parents to know about and to read, and to really learn the toolbox, what they can do to assist their children.
I thought that was helpful, too.
And to know that the schools are ready to receive our children tomorrow, to be able to, you know, triage any concerns, the older they are, the more they know oftentimes, so the fact that that was also a plan put in place just speaks to the thoughtfulness of our district team, and again, I just, I wanna agree, the way things were done today was as non-chaotic as they possibly could have been for families, they had plenty of time to make arrangements, and I really do commend the collaboration and the communication that was had between both entities, because often in real crises, that does not happen. So thank you so much for your leadership, Dr. Luft, Dr. Doherty, for all that you did today in receiving that call and getting things moving. It speaks volumes about how we feel that our children are really safe in our district, which is not a thing for everybody today, unfortunately.
And I just wanna let everybody know also, our clinical team put together a bunch of resources and reached out to specific teachers, and just teachers in general, giving them resources, things that they can say, when to know, when to send a child to a clinical
Support.
Support, or they can just handle it themselves, so there's been a lot of work on the backend of this that made this more, so.
And how about support for the staff? Like, is there a plan for that, you know, in case that they're...
There is. Again, our clinical staff has reached out to very specific teachers that we know were either directly involved, or have students that are directly involved.
Good, very good.
And each building is starting their day with a faculty meeting prior to the arrival of schools to help answer questions, address concerns, make sure that all staff feel informed and well-prepared for when the students arrive.
Yeah, the communication from the school and also from the emergency center over at the Sheriff's Department, they kept sending out those alerts, which were so important, because that helicopter, especially where I am, not too far from Adams Corners, that thing kept circling and circling, and it woke me at around 4:00 a.m. I'm wondering what... And it woke me at around four A. M. I'm wondering what the heck is going on? And then finally that alert came in and they, they let us know that, you know, there was somebody, uh, who, uh, was, you know, had committed a crime and was in the area. But that would have panicked a lot of people just hearing that and without the notifications. Um, it, it was a really well-done job today on all accounts.
In addition to our school communication, which was great, so thank you to all the communication team. Um, there's also the Putnam Valley alerts that go out.
Right.
And so the town of Putnam Valley, if you go on their website, you'll see we get text messages or emails. And it's very important, just, you know, you can be alerted about this or whatever's happening in the town. Sign up for it.
I can tell you, having been over there, they set up the firehouse by the town hall as their command center. And that if the town hall opened up, then there wasn't a single parking space for a single vehicle. Because ev, both rows, both sides of that parking lot were full of police vehicles. It was pretty surreal. Um, okay, so it's hard to transition away from that, but we'll do our best. Uh, Crystal and I had the opportunity to attend the New York State School Board Association Convention down in New York City. And it was really an eye-opening, you feel free to jump in anytime, too. It was an eye-opening experience. I remember Jackie asking me about the agenda. And I said, well, on Sunday, the keynote is someone by the name of Sophia. I don't know if that's like Cher or Madonna, she's got one name. And Jackie goes, oh, my God, you're gonna hear from the robot? So I went to a keynote that was actually provided by an A. I. robot.
Ah, cool.
Who was asked question prompts with no prior knowledge by a, um, the executive director of NISBA. And she listened to the question, within seconds, sent out a, a logical, comprehensive
Crazy.
Answer with like a real looking face moving and it was.
And there was a little sarcasm, I think, thrown into some of the looks she was giving to the audience.
Was this robot standing or sitting?
Oh, no, it was a full-size.
Full-size.
Full-size robot?
Full-size looked as real as a robot can look.
Oh, my Lord.
Like the face looked like a real skin face. And as she spoke, her mouth moved. That's how she was like pronouncing her words.
Like Disney World.
Spoke eloquently.
Except this one had a brain, a real brain.
They had to have the brain open where you can see like the transistors and stuff. There was no confusion. Crystal and I were joking about how this was how every bad, like sci-fi movie starts.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That when the robot went behind the curtain, we were gonna hear like, turn it off! It's already off!
Smart house?
Yeah.
We started with the Jetsons, that's where it began and then, yeah.
Well, we're there. Wow. So there was a lot of, we found ourselves going to a lot of these sort of A. I. Future of Education, everything from the curricular side to the management side, administrative side, to the policy side. And, uh, it's actually probably the, one of the more beneficial conference experiences I've had in some time. I left there with a wealth of information and, uh, my mind racing regarding sort of where we were going from here, uh, regarding schools. So, uh, I don't know if you have anything else you wanna add?
No, um, just that it's here. So we need to figure out as a district, um, how we're gonna do that. Uh, just like when the internet showed up, people wanted to just ignore it and now we can't live without it. So, you know, it's here and, um, uh, Jackie's done some preliminary work on A. I. in the district and, and how, you know, guidelines on how teachers can use it, um, uh, ways that are, are not responsible ways to use it, right? So there's definitely more work to be done. As a board, we need to talk about policy in the near future, like in the very near future. Um, and the hard part about A. I. is that it's technology-based and it will constantly be changing. And so it's not a policy that we'll get to review every five years. We're gonna have to probably review it every six months, maybe. So, you know, we just need to start having that conversation because people are gonna start using it. Um, and we wanna make sure that students, staff are, are using it as responsibly as possibly and that they also know the ways in which it can maybe support, you know, instruction, um, and make their lives, you know, more efficient. Um, one of the, uh, abilities of this is to really be able to individualize education for every student in a way that one teacher to twenty-four students just can't do. So, um, there are some definite benefits, but we just need to make sure that, um, we're being as responsible as we can.
Doesn't get out of hand.
They'll take over.
Yeah, take over.
And as usual, I do wanna compliment the district because I did leave with the feeling that we are, as I feel is typical, ahead of many. There was many, uh, districts there that were like, like, what's, what is this? Or, we block this, we don't let people on this, or, and I think, uh, Jackie's work with her Future of Education team and the development of our guidelines and all the professional development that's taken place with our teachers puts us definitely steps ahead of many of the other districts that were there that are really just now starting to have these conversations. So, uh, there, there was a lot of talk about the exponential co, uh, growth and like that J-curve that A. I. technology will go through over the next couple of years. Um, but I do think while, yes, we will have to continue to revise those as it changes, I think that we are certainly ahead of many regarding, uh, where we stand with A. I.
I attended a digital one, like you guys did, but on last Monday, I don't know if it was the same conference, but digitally there were people from, um, a lot of people from Long Island, some people up in Syracuse. And I felt, uh, through a lot of the discussion, that we were also very ahead. Um, one of the presentations, this guy, he designs A. I., they made a rap song about school boards, um, on the A. I. And they made two, and then people got to choose which one they liked best, and it was just so alarming. Um, and then the subsequent, uh, presentations discussed how, um, people could utilize it and how like the individualized learning, and it was just eye-opening. And when I saw, I like looked up some of the things that we, that obviously you come up with. And, um, I was really impressed compared to what some of the other districts were offering. I was just like, wow. But I'm one of those people who was absolutely just, I can't believe it's here. Like Will Smith is gonna come out of nowhere.
This is what I'm saying.
I was just like.
Is the image, you know, of, of this actually happening, like, you know, the J-curve is a really big deal because what happens in the next ten years is going to revolutionize our world. And we just all have to kind of know that it's coming so that we can do our best to keep up with it. We may not be able to, but, you know, one of the things that, uh, Dr. Loft and I were processing was just, if A. I. is doing certain types of thinking that used to be done, what is the new thinking that will need to be done, right? Is the thinking about making sure that the prompt that I'm asking A. I. is what it needs to be, right? Like, what does that look like and where does problem-solving fit into this equation? Because what happens if the grid goes down one day and people are no longer able to survive because they are so dependent on a robot to help them live life, right? So there's just a lot of questions that we will not answer tonight, but we just need to know that they're coming, so.
And there was one stat, and I'll butcher it, so don't quote me on this, but it was, they're talking about the amount of information that is stored in these large language models. And they, they call it training when they, when they're sending all that information in there. They're sort of training, uh, this A. I. with information that they then analyze and spend back out. And they think it was, the numbers were something like an average reader reads a hundred words every thirty seconds. And if they read twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, they would have to do that for seven thousand-plus years, just to equal the amount of information.
That the A. I. can produce.
Today.
Now.
Right.
Right. Tomorrow, it'll be eight thousand years, you know what I mean? So to try to like fathom what that actually means to the amount of information that they have. And there's nearly no delay in terms of question, answer. And it's analyzing multiple sources, it'll cite the sources, it'll.
That's the thing.
It's pretty cool. But I do think there's a lot of educational benefits. There's a lot of it that's scary, um, for, for many of us, but there's also a lot of educational benefits. We saw, uh, one of the speakers use a tool for, and I, I downloaded it and I have to try it yet. It's like his personal chatbot assistant. So he called up a representative, someone attending the conference who spoke Spanish. He doesn't speak any Spanish. And he pulled out his phone and he was like, uh, good morning, chatbot. And it said, good morning, Dan, Dave, Dan Fitzgerald.
Okay, so I watched the same thing.
Cause he did the rap thing, too.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
He did the rap thing.
Okay, so I thought it was funny.
So he was like, um, hi, uh, he's like, how can I help you today? His assistant on his phone says, and he goes, well, I have this new friend, I forget what her name is. Uh, the problem is she speaks another language. Can you help me with that? And the, the phone says back, of course I can help you with that. What language does she speak? So he says, oh, she speaks Spanish and I speak English. So we're gonna have a conversation. I want you to be the intermediary. Take what I say in English and tell, translate it to Spanish and what she answers in Spanish to English. And so he says something and says, okay, and gives, and then the phone just instantly says, says it to her in Spanish. She responds in Spanish, the phone sends it back to him.
Wow.
No delay, no downtime. In fact, there was one time, which I thought was really funny. She, she obviously gave a longer answer than, and then what it translated was like an abbreviated version. Yeah, paraphrased.
Oh, I hated that. I was like, oh, I don't like it.
And he was like, chat, like, chatbot, I think you're being lazy on me. Like, she definitely said more than that. He goes, can I please get the whole translation? And he was like, the, the phone apologized to him and then gave him the whole, she didn't have to say it again. It just, rather than paraphrasing it, gave sort of word-for-word.
Wow.
Verbatim as to what she said.
Amazing stuff.
And the glasses. So the same person demonstrating this was wearing glasses that have an A. I. tool built inside of them that will eventually, the technology's being worked on right now, give answers on the lens of the glasses. So like, it's here. Say it again. It's here. We gotta get ready and figure out, you know,
Glasses policy.
How kids are gonna use this to be able to learn. And truthfully, I will tell you, I don't think it's gonna come from us. I think it's going to come from them.
Yeah.
Because we're not digital natives. And so the way their brains are wired is completely different based on their experience in life. And that, that was my takeaway was, we just, we, it's here, we need to not negate it. We have to embrace it and figure it out, um, alongside our kids who are a different breed than we are.
Well, what you said about the internet, that we, we are accustomed to that now.
Yeah.
It's become a part of our life.
Right.
The A. I. will, will, it will, all of that.
He looked at an infographic about photosynthesis with the glasses. And then he said, like, glasses, I heard they're called, he's like, tell me what I'm looking at. And then you could hear, he holds the microphone up to this little speaker that's in his ear, and the glasses are explaining the infographic about photosynthesis.
Wow.
Not reading it, but like explaining it.
Yeah, yeah.
So that he understood what it was that he was looking at.
It's amazing stuff. Amazing. It really is.
My favorite statistic was that our technology is gonna change more in the next year than it has in the past one hundred years. And, um,
That's the J-curve.
Again, that is very, you know, a lot of things happened with the past.
It's my longest board, board report of all time.
Get ready for the ride.
Um, all right, I'll start from the other. So the high school hosted their annual color wars. As always, a fantastic event, always impressed by the decorations the students put on and just the school spirit that emanates across this building. Uh, students are always well-behaved, following directions, and it's always a little bit of a fearful moment for me, where you're one poor decision away from a bad situation. Our students seem to always do the right thing, pull it together, and, uh, we're all lucky that the seniors won. So there's a little, much less drama as long as the seniors are. The high school also hosted their I. B. Information Evening. There was twenty-plus families here. Uh, we did something new in terms of having students in the hallway presenting different aspects of the I. B. I think that was something that was very beneficial, along with Vin's typical, um, energy that goes into it and passion about the I. B. programs. I know that was well-received by all. The district completed, ironically, our first respond, not completed, we've completed two of our first responder appreciation events. Uh, I did send a thank you out to all the agencies that came here to the middle school and demonstrated some of their equipment that they have. The state police bought something, a rollover simulation, which I've never seen before. I wasn't even sure how it worked. And then all of a sudden, this car that's on this trailer started spinning, uh, with dummies seat-belted in. And I was like, well, that was cool, but a little anticlimactic. And then the next time I was barely paying attention, I saw a dummy go flying across the parking lot. And I realized what they had done was undo the seatbelt and demonstrate what happens in a car that rolls over here for not wearing a seatbelt and literally launch the dummy out the window across the parking lot. So kids were like, whoa, like that was, that sucked it. They, they got that for sure. Uh, and then our, we had our elementary school community reads event, which by far was the most, uh, individuals came in to read. I was in awe of how many people came in to that building. Some of these, uh, police officers certainly have, uh, teacher blood in them. Uh, there's one individual I know who came into one class and we were like, wow, you're good at this. Can you go in the class next door? Now he's in the auditorium and we just rotate classes through him, like three or four classes at a time. He asked me, I saw, he came to the event on Thursday, the middle school, and he's like, Dr. Loft, would you be okay if I brought my motorcycle into the school tomorrow so the kids could check it out? I'm like, sure, bring a motorcycle into the school tomorrow. So there it was, right in the middle of the auditorium, rotating. He got in his car, drove down to the city.
To get the motorcycle.
Got on his motorcycle, drove it back up to Putnam Valley. It was there in the morning to do this all day long and then drive it back down. So I, I couldn't be more grateful. We had a police dog that was there. We had, uh, the motorcycle, we had firefighters, we had, um, medical.
The helicopter?
Well, we get there again. We had medical people coming, visiting classrooms, rotating through. Margaret at one point got on the speaker and she's like, just bring your class anywhere that they want, right? There was like, there was too much excitement. Because they're like, well, we're gonna see the motorcycle, we're gonna see the motorcycle. So it certainly extended beyond what we, but it was really, kid, they're rotating in to see the police dog. They're rotating in to see the motorcycle. They were, um, it was a huge event. It was a huge success. And it was our, sort of our culminating event was. And the previous years, we've had the Westchester County Police Helicopter land here at the middle school, high school. These kids, for the most part, and the current fifth graders have all seen it many, several times. So I made the decision to switch it up a little bit and to bring it to the elementary school. So we had all elementary school students sitting out on the hill. We knew the helicopter was on its way. Thankfully, it was a beautiful day. And you could hear it, you could hear it, you could hear it, and all of a sudden, this thing came flying. Not just flying, like, cause of course it's flying, quickly, zooming over the top of the treetops, right over the kids, banked up over the building. Margaret was like, I ducked the motorcycle. The kids were going ballistic. Uh, I have video of it and all you hear is the kids screaming. Um, they were also screaming when an airplane was flying overhead at thirty thousand feet above us. I was like, no, 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 that one's not landing here. That's not the helicopter.
That's what's happening today.
Um, so when the helicopter came, the real, that was the thing landing here because it was fifty feet off the ground. So they got circled around a couple of times, landed right on the field. It was so cute. The classes all lined up as elementary school students do in perfectly straight lines. It was like a ninety-degree turn at one point. Uh, they paraded by the helicopter. They got to check it out, ask questions. Some of these classes made thank you cards. They were handing them to the pilots. It wa, it was a really special event. Um, there was a little apprehension among some teachers, right, because you know, elementary school teachers are, are very concerned, right? Like, I don't know if this is a good idea, like, there's, there's like electric lines over the driveway. My analogy was like, the pilot hitting the electric lines on the driveway is the equivalent to you driving into a telephone pole that happens to be on the side of the road. Like, they do this for a living. Um, so obviously there was no issues. Landing, all the classes paraded through. When they were leaving, uh, we made an announcement for the classes to just go back outside the building. And I asked them if you could just do a flyover over the building. He almost flew, flew through the building, I think. We saw, I have a video, Dave's like, watch the building, watch the building, watch the building. Uh, but he swooped in around the building, up and around twice, and then took off. And it was, it was a surreal experience to see. And it's something that those elementary school kids will never forget, so. Um, and kudos to, it's really, uh, Putnam Valley parents that made this all possible. The tactical officer on the plane, sort of like the copilot, is a parent of Putnam Valley students. And he, he's the one who helped arrange the flyover at the homecoming game. He helped to coordinate this event. And Mike DeMeo, who's had multiple kids come through the district, is a lieutenant for the Westchester County, uh, the Police Department. He's always been instrumental in helping us arrange this each year. So I do wanna give compliments to those two, as well as the pilot, whose name I can't pull up right now, but he was a Black Hawk helicopter pilot in the Army, which is part of the reason why he flies the way he does. But, uh, internally grateful for their cooperation and willingness to send, uh, their police helicopter and for this sort of once-in-a-lifetime experience for our students. As we spoke a little about before, Dr. Payne, along with other, uh, other administrators from across the region, along with some of our own administrators. along with some of our own administrators here in Putnam Valley, held a, a regional MTSS event here at the Putnam Valley High School in the library, and some of our own teachers participated in a panel discussion. So I think there was nearly twenty schools representing this group, and the, the group, the work will continue. They have three full-day seminars coming up throughout the school year. Uh, the Education Foundation hosted their trunk-or-treat event. Uh, Jackie and I were there as judges, which was not, almost not fair. Um, it's really hard to pick little kids, like, who's the cutest little kid in a costume? I'm like, all of them, but we had to pick one person? So it was, the turnout was extraordinary, uh, I brought my son Jakey with me, and it, we struggled to get back to the car as all the kids were going through to get their candy. Uh, but kudos everyone involved, the Education Foundation for making that happen. I don't know how much money they made, but I'm sure it was uh a lot. But I know it's a tremendous amount of work that goes in to make that all possible, so compliments to all of them and those who volunteered to. People decorate their trunks, they're not messing around. We had a couple of teachers, I loved seeing them there, the teachers came, uh, some of our new teachers in the middle school signed up to decorate their trunks, and they were like, we didn't know what we were getting into. He went to the dollar store, bought a couple of decorations, they're like, this guy has a pier sticking out of his truck. This one's got a bubble machine, this one's got, they're, it's, it's pretty amazing what people can do, so. Um, that was a very successful event. Our girls' field hockey team had their first sectional game today. I know it was at least six-nothing when I left, uh, they may have scored more afterwards, but they will continue to the next round. I know our football team has a big game coming up. Oh, this is our last first responder appreciation event, November first, Friday, five-thirty. We hope all first responders, whether you live in, serve, or know someone in Putnam Valley, come here five-thirty, march down behind the color guard, uh, stand on the field for the National Anthem, let us say a few kind words, and then you're welcome to leave and continue your Friday night plans, or stay and enjoy the game. This game is actually a league championship game, we'll be playing Valhalla. Uh, the winner of this game will be the league champions, and it'll determine our seed going into the sectionals. So very exciting game, and a very exciting event, we hope to fill the turf one of these years with first responders coming out just to be recognized. Uh, the cellphone thing I know we spoke a lot about, I was gonna sort of echo many of the opinions that are shared, while I welcome uh the governor's attention towards something that I really believe is a student mental health crisis. In many aspects, we're putting sort of a one-inch Band-Aid on a six-inch wound, and students spend much more time at home on these devices.
Oh, absolutely.
And while we are far from free from cellphone issues in schools, an overwhelming majority of cellphone issues start at home.
Absolutely.
And become school issues.
Absolutely.
So anyway, I hope individuals, their parents, take advantage of our cellphone forum. Next week, I hope uh parents research and read up on this, cause it really comes down to um parental controls. And, and I hope the governor and all elected officials put as much or more pressure on social media companies.
Absolutely.
Um, technology companies, there is no thirteen-year-old kid that should have access to Snapchat. Uh, and you can lie about your birthday and be on there in ten seconds. So uh, there's certainly more that the technology companies and the social media companies could do to keep these tools that are out of the hands of kids that are not yet.
Ready for them.
Developed to, to be using them, so. Um, that's certainly where my advocacy push would be, would be to work with the technology companies and the social media companies to have real restrictions in place that prohibit uh the use of these tools for children beyond a certain age, I would argue eighteen, after they leave our schools, they can start using this stuff. A couple of quick announcements, I said before, our first responder appreciation football game, before the game this Friday, November first, five-thirty, and our theater week, Theater Works Fall Drama, The Girls on the Boat, uh, goes November eighth and ninth at seven PM, and Sunday, November tenth at two PM. Now I'm gonna stop talking now, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move into new business now, Sam, item one, please.
Thank you. Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to retire the currently active Series nine thousand policies and approve the second reading of revised policy nine thousand, that's personnel series, as per document eighty-eight slash twenty-five attached to the agenda and other official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Crystal, item number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to enter into a supplemental memorandum of agreement with the Putnam Valley Federation of Teachers, PVFT, to meet a particular student's programmatic needs as per document number ninety dash twenty-five attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Item number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the student superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Assistant Superintendent for PVS and Human Resources Natalie Doherty from the district for the purpose of retirement effective the close of business on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, as per document number eighty-seven dash twenty-five attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second with enormous regrets, really.
Thank you.
You were gonna be sorely missed, I mean that now.
Questions or comments? There you go. Nice.
That's a good tease, that she changed her mind, but.
You will be in this, big shoes to fill, and you have almost a year to do the brain dump, so you're gonna be very busy doing that brain dump to the district.
Thank you very much.
She said after this morning, if there's anyone, she can move that date up.
Yeah, thank you for your work this morning, truly appreciate it.
We were talking this morning, and she's like, well, combined, we have like over fifty years of educational experience, like, this is definitely a first for both of us.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Item number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Sierra Espinera as an eleven-week long-term substitute teacher at the elementary school effective November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four through February eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, or sooner, at the discretion of the Board of Education, at the substitute salary rate of a hundred and seventy-five dollars per day. Ms. Espinera holds childhood education one through six, and early childhood uh B through twelve, uh, B through two initial certifications.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. And item number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Gloria Crespo to a probationary appointment as a school monitor, effective October thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, with a probationary period of fifty-two weeks, October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five, at the elementary school on step six of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Um, now open up to public comment on any topic? And we don't have any, so. Okay, so we'll move to topics for our next meeting, for upcoming meetings.
So our next board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November twelfth. Uh, this is a change in date, it was originally the fourteenth, but there's a conflict with another um board development session that evening, so a decision was made to move this meeting to November, to November, it's been a long day, to Tuesday, November twelfth. Then this will be our Technology Department and Facilities Department opening schools reports.
Thank you. Okay, so open up to comments for the board.
Yeah, I, I have a question for Dr. Luft. What is the situation, if you can explain it, about this proposed regionalization with BOCs? What are they talking about, what does it mean?
It's a great question. So I attended a session for superintendents and representatives from the State Education Department last week regarding regionalization. I went in with equal number of questions, I didn't understand what it even was. Essentially, what the State Education Department, and I'm summarizing, uh, what was like a four-hour meeting. The, the State Education Department is looking to do is to gather information from the field in order to help set their priorities, advocacy priorities, regulatory changes, legislative changes, based upon the needs of the schools themselves. They said they're, they're, how they operate for years has been, they make the decisions and they tell the schools what the decisions are.
Right.
What the commissioner is looking to do is to flip that model, have the schools tell us what they need, and that's what we'll advocate for on their behalf. So the regionalization piece, which my two cents is a terrible name, uh, and they were made well aware of how terrible everyone thought the name was, it, it speaks to like merging of schools or sharing of services, and that's not really what it is. The regionalization piece is our district superintendent for our BOCs, I don't know how many there are, but there's X number across the state, they're responsible for gathering this sort of input for their region. So every district has this report we have to fill out, we send it into our district superintendent, we highlight some of the things that go well, some of the things we struggle with, the resources we need, the changes we want, all of that stuff is in this report. The district superintendent then creates a report that represents their region. So across my region, these are some of the things we do really well, these are some of the things that we struggle with. The hope is that you gain traction amongst legislators or others to say, hey, this is something your region wants, oh, and it's also something that this region, this region, this region wants, so why don't you get together with representatives for those five regions, and then that could be something that you could advocate on their behalf. This is what, that's what, that's how they sold it? There's really no, there's no impact on the school district other than filling in this comprehensive survey uh of information. It's a lot of work for the district superintendent, so I feel bad for Neil, but at least I don't have to do the work. Uh, it's, the gripes are typical, they ask us for information they already have, like, what's your enrollment number? What's your student achievement number? What's your, well, they have all that information. Uh, but they're, they don't have the means to pre-populate all that onto the form, so. Taking at face value, that's what they say this is for, uh, that's the intention of it. Is there skepticism? Sure. Is regionalization a poor term? Likely, but I'm appreciative of the notion of, let's hear from the field, see what they do well, what they struggle with, and how we can help them, and that's what we'll work for. If that ends up being how this works out, then I'm very appreciative of it, because I do think they need to listen more.
The great fear is losing local control, and that is, you know, uh, people who have looked at this, uh, you know, some in our community, some outside, are, are fearful that the ability for Putnam Valley to determine its fate and, and its direction will be usurped by this so-called regionalization. What they should call it is school representation. You know, this way, each district is saying to the BOC superintendent, this is what we need, this is what we would like, and move it that way. But this fear of loss of local control is a strong one out there.
So that's, those sentiments certainly came up during the meeting. The individuals that were there from the State Education Department were very clear that that is not their intention. Uh, I think it's more about sharing best practices and sharing common struggles more than anything else. That's, would be a better name than what a, a regionalization is. But uh, we'll see what happens, I mean, right now, it's a mandate, they changed the timeline, they give us more time to complete it. So we'll send the information in, the district superintendent has already met with all of the superintendents in the region. Our priorities remain uh student mental health, that's a huge priority. We're looking actually to um expand the CTE program offerings and what's available for students, that's something else that we're looking at, and those are sort of the initiatives that he's, he's gonna summarize. We meet frequently, so I think these conversations happen all the time, so he has a pretty good sense as to what districts in our region are looking for, what they do well and what they struggle with.
Could you keep us updated on this, this movement?
As long as the state ed keeps me updated, you got it.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Luft, thank you.
Any other comments? As Jeremy mentioned, um, our next meeting will be Tuesday, November twelfth. Uh, wish everyone a safe and happy Halloween, please vote, open vote, um, open voting is going on now. Election Day is November fifth, the schools will be closed, and Veterans Day, November eleventh, the schools will also be closed, and happy Veterans Day to all of our, all that have served. And a motion to adjourn, please.
Okay, so move.
Second.
Okay, have a great evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.